Good evening, Board of Commissioners and members of our audience and those who are tuning in online on social media and via Cobb 23. We appreciate you being with us on this February 23rd BOC hearing or BOC meeting. Tonight, we are joined by Pastor Marty Godfrey of Burton Hickory Baptist Church and also firefighter Lisa Cook out of Abining Station 5, Sea Shift. They are going to join us and lead our invocation and pledge. If you are willing and able, please stand.
All right, let us pray. Heavenly Father, at the beginning of this meeting, we just stop and we want to acknowledge who you are as our Creator and our Sustainer. Father, we thank you for being with us during this difficult season that we've experienced over the last year. We want to stop and just pray for those who've been impacted, whether it's through death, whether it is through physical illnesses, those who suffer emotional illnesses, as well as those who have had relational difficulties, Father. And we thank you that you are near to the brokenhearted and those who are crushed in spirit. Father, we acknowledge that you say in your word that unless the Lord builds a house, its builder's labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, its watchmen stand guard in vain. So, Lord, we come to you. We know that you tell us that if anyone lacks wisdom to come and to ask of you, and you give generously without judgment. So, Father, we acknowledge that we are in need of your wisdom during times like this. We thank you for these public servants. We thank you for those first responders. We thank you for those medical professionals, for business owners, for the houses of worship that make up this vital community. And, Lord, help us to look to you to bring us together in a time of division. And, Lord, we pray tonight that you would guide this time of meeting and that you would direct our thoughts and our words, that they would be pleasing to you and that they would bring unity and health and wellness to this group as well as to this community. And we thank you for caring for each one of us, and we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now call this meeting to order. Our first matter of business is to receive an update regarding COVID-19 from Cobb Douglas Public Health. Good evening. Good to see you, Lisa.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Dr. Maymark is going to start us out and share her screen, so we appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight.
Very good, thank you.
And good evening, Dr. Maymark.
Hey, sorry, I was having trouble unmuting, so let me share my screen. Okay, great. Thank you for having us tonight, and we'll go ahead and give you an update on our COVID situation. So, those of you that have been keeping track of the numbers at the state on the DPH website, you might see that there's a little bit different look and some extra information now on the COVID webpage that they have. So, now they've combined the PCR and the antigen numbers that we've talked about, and the antigen numbers are the ones that you can get within 15 to 30 minutes, and so those are all included. When you look at them together, you'll see that our cases are over 68,000, and the total numbers over the last two weeks is 396. So, still extremely high, but we have come down tremendously over the last few weeks. And you can see that in the Epi curve to the right. Here's the information on the desk, and actually, it is quite a bit higher than that. This is the PCR numbers in the desk, and I'll show you a little later the numbers that have the antigens included. We are hoping that this curve on the right bears true, that it has dropped off. It does look like there has been a slowing, and the month is almost over. So, but January was an especially deadly month for us all, and I'll show you some of those as we go along. So, when you look at the PCR numbers, you can see that we were at 269 cases per 100,000, but when you add in the antigens, it puts us closer to 400,000. The antigen number is actually the better number to watch here because it gives us a truer picture of the number of cases that we have. You can see the number of deaths, so with the antigen and the PCR, it puts us almost at 900 deaths for the county, so definitely very high. Now, we are seeing improvement in the hospital numbers, and that is very good to see, so those numbers are coming down. And here's the curves that you see, the number of deaths that we had, so you can see just how bad January was for us, and we had a very high number of deaths in our county. February is looking better, and we hope that it holds true for the rest of the month. This is the breakdown of the age. This time, I put all of the deaths in there, and so you can see that are in the pink, that 60 to 69, all the way over to 90s, and we even had, I think, like eight oxygenarians, is that right? Or 100, people that are 100 years and over that passed away, and so there was quite a lot of people, but you can see just how hard hit our senior citizen population was. Here's a reminder of our phases that we're in right now for the vaccines, and I know a lot of people are interested in that. We've really had a tough week with the weather. So, we've had, we've done over 25,000 vaccines at our CDPH location and over 21,000 at Cobb. The vaccines were delayed last week because of the weather, and so we just received a shipment of our back order from last week, and we're just really waiting with bated breath to get our next shipment. We were owed three shipments this week, then we found out they canceled one of those, so the first doses were canceled, and then we are only waiting on our second dose allocations. And so, we have enough to get through next week in second doses, but we really need that next shipment to come in as well. One of the questions that we get a lot is, why don't you bank doses? People were quite angry that we had to move appointments when we did not have enough vaccines. The CDC does not actually allow us to do that, and the state is actually even stricter about watching how many vaccines that we have on hand and what's in the system. If you have too many banks, they won't send you any vaccine. And so, we were lucky, we were able to get through Friday even of last week. We were able to move those people over to this week and should be able to get them, and they're in a good window under the 42 days from their first to second vaccine. So, once we receive a notice of the second shipment, we will resume our outreach events. We were very grateful that the partners that were helping us schedule appointments were able to hold off for a while until we had vaccine on hand, and so they were taking quite a delay to try to wait for vaccines. Well, the good news is that somebody does have vaccines, so I want to make sure we share that. So, there are four GMA sites that are open on Monday. So, the four sites are here at Clayton, Macon, Tavisham, and Albany. You can go to myvaccin Georgia dot com. What's nice about that is you can actually, you don't even have to be in the eligibility criteria, and they'll take your name and put it on a waiting list. You can sign up for any site, and I heard just in the news, I think it was yesterday, that Albany wasn't even taking appointments. They didn't even have enough people to vaccinate, so you could even just walk up and get appointments. But I would double check that now, but Albany was the only one out of the four that had vaccines appointments available. They take those out of a different pot, and so they were able to do those. So, the vaccine supply, what we're hearing, though, is that March is when it's going to start picking up. And so, Johnson &amp; Johnson is going Friday for their review with the FDA. There is some positive news that they should be able to get through their emergency use approval. My understanding, if um vaccine they'll be able to produce, it won't be on the scale that Moderna and Pfizer were able to produce, but at least it's one more to add on to the vaccines. And then around that same time, in the first, second, and third weeks of March, we should see Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson pick up their manufacturing of vaccines. So, we'll be working, we're working on different projects, but a lot of it is reaching out to some of our communities that have had a lot of difficulty getting access to vaccinations, and that's, so that's working out really well to try to get some people to come to get vaccinated. I'll turn it over to Lisa to talk about our testing.
Thank you, Dr. Maymark. So, we wanted to just reinforce with the residents that we have, still offer a lot of testing across the county. You know, we're still in a high spread category, and we have a need for residents to still be able to access testing on a daily basis. And so, we're still offering over 7,000 tests across our district. You can see some of these locations are listed here. All of these are still free test options, and you still register through our Cobb and Douglas Public Health website. We are excited to announce that as of this week, we started a new partnership for testing with Mako Labs. And so, through the generosity of the Cobb County government, we've been able to offer the testing back again at Jim Miller Park. They're in a different area than our vaccination drive-through, but they're also offering a testing drive-through. It is still a shallow nasal swab. Results are still coming back very quickly on that. The only difference between this and some of our other testing is that they are collecting insurance. However, there will be no out-of-pocket cost, so if a person is uninsured, if someone has a high deductible or has a copay required, that will not be collected from them at this site. And you can, there is a different website location to register for this testing, but you can still link to it through our Cobb and Douglas Public Health site. Next slide, please. We also, I'm pleased to tell you all, because of a really generous donation from our testing lab partner, Ipsom Diagnostics, to our foundation, we are now able to provide thousands and thousands of food boxes to our families in Cobb and Douglas County in need through our testing sites that I just mentioned, January through the end of March. And you can see in Cobb County, we have locations on Friday at Legion Park and on Saturdays at Eastwood Baptist Church. These are really nice food boxes that have not only fresh vegetables, but also dairy and produce, I mean dairy and meats in them. You do not have to get a test in order to get a food box, and you also, so you can come just for a test or just for a food box or for both, and you don't have to register in advance for the food boxes. It's just a drive-up opportunity. Thank you. Next slide. I'm also really excited to tell you about some of this new, you may have seen it on the news, but the CDC last week came out with a little bit of leeway on folks who are fully vaccinated. So, if you are an individual who has had both doses right now and you're two weeks after your second dose, if you happen to get exposed to a positive person, then you are no longer required to quarantine up to three months. So, if I'm fully vaccinated, I have a window of about three months after being vaccinated with that second dose and developing my immunity. I have about three months that if I'm exposed, I do not have to quarantine. This is great news for folks who are trying to stay at work or be able to take care of family members. We do still ask that they watch for symptoms. If they do develop any symptoms, they immediately would start to quarantine and get tested. They also, we want them to make sure to continue to wear your mask and watch your distance, stay away from large crowds and wash your hands frequently. But it does give folks a little bit of leeway. As it goes on and we find As it goes on and we find that the immunity is retained, I expect that CDC will extend this as we go through the vaccination study process. Dr. Meemar, anything you want to add about that? Okay. Next slide, please. So a few takeaways for tonight. First of all, we appreciate everybody's patience as we try to put our hands on vaccine. As we've said more than once, our staff and our partners across the county have much more capacity to provide vaccinations than we have vaccine in hand. We were ready for a road trip this last week to go try to find vaccine, but it just wasn't an option for us. So as more and more vaccine comes into the county, I can tell you that public health, as well as all of our other partners, are really ready to get that out into the community. We appreciate folks' patience. I do want to remind everyone that even though we know that there are a lot of people who want to get their vaccinations, we are trying to make sure with the vaccine that does come in, that we prioritize our second doses first so that we can make sure that our residents are fully vaccinated. As we get in more vaccine, as Dr. Meemar just mentioned, we're hoping for more later on this week. And as we get more above and beyond those folks that are due for their second doses, we will certainly open it up through our partners and through our website as appropriate to allow first doses. We are still concerned about the variant strains that are coming in. And we've had multiple cases of that UK strain in the county. We're watching that very closely. Good news is that we do, we are seeing that the vaccine is taking care of that and kind of preventing that transmission. But we also are watching it very carefully in the other mutations of the vaccine, I mean of the virus as well. Can't have a presentation from public health this past year without ending on that we're still at high spread. We still don't have everybody immunized that we want to get immunized. And so we have to continue to do all of those prevention practices that we've all been doing for a year. If I were there, I would say, say it with me. Watch your distance, wear your mask, wash your hands, and try not to gather outside of your household. Thank you so much.
Thank you, both Dr. Meemar and Lisa, for that update. It was very helpful. Lisa, you are here with us, so we could have said it with you, but we'll pass for tonight. Hopefully, we know that we are still experiencing very high deaths with respect to the pandemic. So even though our case rate is going down, just be mindful of where we still are in the midst of the pandemic. I want to thank both of you, Dr. Meemar and Lisa, for all you guys do to be present for us for our regular meetings so that we can keep the public informed and provide opportunity for all of the commissioners to ask questions. So with that, do any commissioners have any questions for our presenters tonight? Great. There are no questions from those of us up here. But again, we thank you so much for coming every Board of Commissioners meetings and providing us this valuable information. Hope you two have a great evening.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate all the support that the commission and the Cobb County government staff has provided us throughout the past year and most recently, as we've been trying to get vaccine out to the community. Our heart really does go out to all of the residents who have lost family members or friends. It's really been a horrible year and a tough last month on everybody. And so just, I would reinforce, in addition to the three W's, add the be kind, because you never know what folks have been going through, both emotionally and with family members and economically. And just, you know, we're all, everybody's doing their best to get through this. So we just need to be, show each other some kindness.
Thank you. That's a great note to end off on for so many reasons. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. We are now moving into public comment. If you can let us know, Bill, how many speakers we have tonight?
There are, let's see, 10, 10 speakers.
10 speakers. Okay. Commissioners, do you want to keep our regular protocol of having six speak first and four afterwards? Or do you want to have all 10 speak? I see what, please feel, we'll go through each commissioner. Commissioner Gamble?
We had this discussion at our board retreat that the policy is six in the beginning, six at the end. Therefore, we need to stick with policy.
Thank you. Are there any other opinions? You agree? You're fine with that? Okay. So with that, we will go six and four. And the four remaining will speak after we go through our regular business agenda.
Your first speaker is Christine Solomson.
Please feel free. So let's share a little bit of protocol. For one, thank you for coming tonight. You'll speak up here on the dais. You'll have five minutes. Even though your name was stated, please help us in restating your name.
Okay.
The clock is on the dais.
Okay. Hi, my name is Christine. I'm a single working mom. I've been greatly impacted by the COVID-19. I moved into Cobb County March 14th. On March 27th, I was put on administrative leave. It has been incredibly hard for me to take care of my household, my family, as a single mom, working. I was, when I was called back to work, I was called back in a different capacity, a different position. And so for that, I'm making a third of what I was making. So with other bills and a household to take care of, juggling my bills, my payments, trying to decide what's most important. I've fallen behind in my rent, utilities. And my landlord is an independent. So when I started getting resources sent to me to get help, I didn't qualify. You know, I went through the list of everything that I was sent. One told me that they can't help me because I wasn't current with my rent. They can pay one month if you're behind one month. I had another place tell me that I didn't have infant children. I had someone else tell me that I didn't qualify because there wasn't any funds left. We're not accepting any more applications. I mean, the list went on and on. Same for my landlord. She wasn't able to get any funding, and so she had me evicted. So in October, I got an eviction notice. And then a lawsuit was served on me in December, five days before Christmas. Sorry. My landlord hounded the magistrate court. And I went to court on Friday for eviction. I was the first to be in front of the judge for an eviction that I didn't ask for. I'm $11,000 behind. So I did finally get ahold of HomeSaver with Monica. And that was on Monday, the holiday. And there was a lot to get done before I went to court. But they were able to help me get through the application process. I have not been approved. I still have to jump through a lot of hoops. But there is a lot of hoops here. And I wanted to come here tonight because, as a single working mom, this has to be an easier process for people. If there's money there, then it needs to be able to get to these people like myself and others that are being evicted. And I have a daughter who is really struggling with this shutdown. And there is nothing I can do to help her. But if she doesn't have a stable home to be in, that just makes it that much worse. And there is nothing I can do to tell her it'll be okay, because it's out of my hands. So here's the thing, the criteria for, I am so sorry. And the guidelines in which to qualify for this funding needs to be streamlined and help us get the money to the people that need the money. You have to look outside the box sometimes because not everybody falls within those guidelines of what you're asking for us to fill out. You know, I'm single, I'm a mom, I'm working, I came from work, I'm working. But there isn't a better job out there for me right now, and I'm willing to work. But I need some help. So not on drugs. I try to do the right thing. I work hard. Just, I'm just asking for some help. So I'm hoping that maybe some changes can occur with this, streamlining these guidelines and helping us get money. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Maria Billingsley?
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Billingsley. I'm originally from Alabama, but I've been here now for a few years. During the pandemic, like most, I faced hardship. And I'm a single woman. I don't have any kids. I once was working two jobs, but because of the pandemic, I was laid off. I've also applied for unemployment, rental assistance, and I've yet to receive help from either. Just like she said, a lot of the requirements I don't meet because I don't have kids or I might have not been living in a certain area for a long time or things of that nature. I ran across Ms. Monica's information because I guess they was putting it out in the doors. So ever since then, I was able to reach out to more people. But nobody has called me back. Star C finally emailed me back saying they did receive my application, but yet to tell me whether or not I was approved or denied. Ms. Linda Van with Sweet Waters was going to assist me, but she found out two days prior to helping that she couldn't do it because Star C was partnered with my apartment complex. So what I want to know is, why is it that if there's other companies that have the funds that are willing to help, why are they being blocked from helping? Because I didn't know that my apartment complex was partnered with another company. And it's just, it's hard right now for everybody. And I'm just, really don't make sense. Like, I'm literally jumping through hoops, just like she is, to just try to get assistance. I haven't even got my unemployment because they're backed up. And it's a lot going on. And like I say, I'm like she, I'm willing to work two jobs. I was working two jobs. And it's just, my line of work, my patients, they went into retirement homes because their families are scared because of COVID. And they just don't really have the time to deal with what's going on. So they're having to take their mothers and fathers and place them in different facilities. So it's just, it's a lot. And nobody's helping, nobody's reaching out, nobody's seeing anything. And it's just too many guidelines. You got to have this, you got to have that, you can't be this, you can't be that. And I'm just like, well, what do I need to be? What do I need to do? Because I'm doing everything that they're asking me to do, and I'm still not getting any feedback. And I think that's crazy. You have the $4,800, but you can't do it because you're partnered with somebody else. But they're not saying that prior to. And then the day of appointments, people are getting turned down because they don't even know that their apartment complexes are partnered with other companies. I don't think that's fair. So I just don't know what else to do.
Thank you.
Davida Carter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing? My name is Davida Carter. And I just want to say hello to all the board members. Board Chairperson Lisa Cupid, Kelly Gamble, Jessica Richardson, Joanne Burrell, and Monique Sheffield. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to speak about the 22 million allocated for the COVID relief and rental assistance. As a Cobb County resident that have been affected by this global COVID pandemic financially, first, I want to thank you all because y'all have done, y'all have done a lot, you know, as far as the help with Star C, Home Savers, you know, Musk Ministries. But all of them do need to have like one universal criteria. They all have different criterias, like the other young lady said. My husband's job been shut down almost a year, March 15th, 2021. Home Depot Supply and Sterling Spoon Culinary Management, the restaurant he works in, still closed. So there's two companies in Cobb County still shut down. It's just a lot. I'm sorry. You know, it causes a lot of financial and depression in our community. Because we don't know where, you know, like last week, okay, he's getting an unemployment, but the payments didn't even come last week. So he didn't, he went a whole week without an unemployment payment last week. We are like really suffering. I would like to suggest, you know, one long-term solution that could help and not just rental assistance. And that would be, I pulled up this morning, there are three multifamily properties that are available in Cobb County. With some of that 22 million, if Cobb County could purchase one or more of these places and make it subsidized for working families like these women that are single and working, also for the disabled like myself and the senior citizens in Cobb County, that would take care of three demographics right there. And it would be a long-term solution. And it wouldn't just be, you know, trying to help here and here with $4,800 for each family. Now, I got help with Star C. But with him still being out of work and unemployment, we're still struggling. We're still struggling, you know, just to make rent. I'm current now, but I still need help. But what company can I apply for for help now because I'm current? You have to be late. I'm not late, but we're still struggling. So that's one of the things I would like to bring to the commissioners to see if there's any other long-term things that can help our community. And I want to thank you all again for letting me speak, and y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Strowman?
Good evening, Lisa Cupid.
Good evening.
And all the commissioners. My name is Denise Strowman.
Yes, Ms. Denise, and I'm so sorry. I remember you because you have that nice, sweet, quiet voice. But if you don't mind, just helping to lean in. Thank you.
Yes, now.
There we go. Thank you.
I'm here today. When I first resigned in Cobb County, I had, I was working at Home Depot Carpet Office. And I had got laid off. So right now, I haven't been able to find any, I haven't been able to find a carpet office, carpet job. So right now, I am working. But it's just been a struggle to make ends meet. As a woman, to make ends meet, I'm able to, I'm able to move in with my family. But I just don't want to uproot my children to another county, and they'll be behind in school. As I would suggest, I would like Cobb County to have more rental assistance. Also, if the requirements of the, for the guidelines for the apartment complexes and housing, if it could be a more, the guidelines could be a more lenient now during the pandemic. And also for the people that are getting unemployment, if they'll be able to... if they'll be able to, if we can change it so that they'll be eligible to get rent, to be able to get an apartment with the income, unemployment income, if there can be a streamline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Quantina Scott?
Greetings, good evening, everybody. I'm back again. Would like to add on to some of the things that were already being said by some of the former people speaking before me. Would like to start off by saying first, seniors are being left out as far as the process of this housing pandemic during the pandemic. The, I've talked to the senior, Cobb Senior Program. They can only help with a senior trying to transition into housing as far as first month and last month. Seniors are on a fixed income. A lot of them can't move because they don't have the funds, let alone the requirement of the income guidelines to meet two and a half times the income. So some seniors are having to move. They can't live with family due to the pandemic. Some of them are high risk with children being around and family. So some type of stipulation or some type of, something just needs to take place to help the seniors out right now. They are, some of them are being put in a position where they'll, they'll end up being homeless. Been doing some outreach work at some local motels. Some of them can only pay for a couple of weeks and then they're left to fend for themselves. So they can't get access to food, they can't get access to Social Security, they can't even get access to fill out the applications to get assistance. Some of them are disabled. So having access right now is hindering a lot of people. Some people don't have computers, some people don't have access to faxing. Even with code enforcement, to take it to a step further, code enforcement, they're putting, you know, tags on people's cars. If a person's car gets impounded, they no longer have a vehicle to get around. Some people have to choose between registration, insurance, or paying for rental assistance, I mean, paying for their housing or even food. So code enforcement, I think, also needs to, you know, come up with additional procedures during this pandemic to help assist with people so that their vehicles don't get taken away. You know, if their vehicle is also taken away, a student can't get access to the internet. If a parent has to go to a McDonald's or to a Starbucks or to a local place to even get Wi-Fi or even closer to a bus that's within their community. It's been cold. Nobody wants to sit outside trying to get Wi-Fi just to log on to get their education. Clarification needs to be met as far as the new procedure for this rental assistance. I think that the programs should be lessened to at least three programs helping out. The three stronger programs that can help out, who have the means, who have the faculties to go ahead and process the applications. Less is better. Funding needs to get to some of the properties a little bit sooner. Landlords and property owners need clarification on the application process. What is needed, how long it's going to take to get the funding to them, what is the process? They need to have access to that information and that information needs to be readily available to them. They shouldn't have to search and find, they shouldn't have to go to a county government site to try and figure this out to help assist people. That's outside of their job as far as managing a property or even a landlord who has to take care of, you know, a property. It is with my deepest hope and regards that this funding that is coming through is being allocated to help the people and not to help line the pockets of other people who are trying to take advantage of this opportunity, such as some committees being put together who are not doing their jobs. If you guys are putting together committees to oversee the funding, they have a responsibility to make sure that we as people aren't coming up here to complain about the process. Because they should be doing their job if you guys are paying them to oversee the funding, the process, and whatever else entails with that. So I just hope that the money is properly being used to help the people and not to help line the pockets of other people trying to take advantage of this moment right now. And I'm done, my time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfectly timed. Monica Delancey?
Good evening, my name is Monica Delancey. Madam Chair, Commissioners, guests, and visitors. I come before you this evening with gratitude for your efforts to distribute much-needed federal funds received for rental assistance throughout Cobb County. As an advocate and resident for many years, I know how desperate families and individuals are for this assistance. While we all may breathe a collective sigh of relief, I must remind you that this respect is appreciated, but will be short-lived. Housing instability and insecurity is a persistent and chronic problem in our community. As research nationwide has shown, wages have not kept up with growing demand for stable housing. The price of a one-bedroom monthly rental unit is almost two-thirds of the gross monthly pay of the average worker. The price of a two-bedroom rental unit is nearly three-fourths of the gross monthly pay of that same worker, and that is considering that a worker is earning a minimum of $12 an hour and working 40 hours a week. For the elderly, disabled, or single-income households with children, the cost of housing is simply unaffordable. These individuals and families are not residing in our community, they are surviving in our community from month to month. One setback such as an illness or loss of a job can lead to the trauma of an eviction and in most cases homelessness. Why should we all be concerned? Research shows that housing security, insecurity has negative effects on entire communities. People who move from place to place cannot afford strong bonds or networks. Businesses cannot maintain loyal customers and employers cannot find dependable employees. And what about our schools? It is no surprise that our, that the schools with the highest transit rates perform the lowest on standardized achievement tests and have the most challenges when it comes to parent involvement, attendance, and even graduation rates. Simply put, housing stability is the foundation of any successful community. So Cobb County, I challenge all of you to join me for advocating for real and long-term housing solutions. Yes, the pandemic relief will help a lot of families, but for how long? In just a few months, when the money is gone and only a fraction of eligible families are able to be assisted, we'll be all back in the same place. Adventure course will be overflowing, once again, with elderly, disabled individuals, and with black and brown families who simply do not earn enough to maintain the rent. Our solution is subsidized housing, where families and individuals can pay rent based on what they earn. Research has shown that this is only a solution to our housing dilemma. What individual or family wants to pack up and move every six months or a year just because they get behind on rent and cannot catch up? What individual or family wants to go to bed at night knowing that a few days missed from work could mean not be able to keep a roof over their heads? What child wants to be afraid to make friends in school or to become fond of their teachers because they know they would be most likely be at a different school next year? Housing, like water, is one of our most basic needs, but most crucial needs as well. Also, like water, people don't only need it during a pandemic. Housing is something they need every day, every year, and in Cobb County. We can work to make this happen. There will be a rentals rights summit on March 21st at 3:00 PM. I want you to join We Thrive Riverside Rentals Association, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes our speakers this evening.
Thank you, Bill. We now are at our tab for the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda should have been scrolling prior to this meeting and scrolling afterwards on the screen before you. Therefore, we will not have it scroll at this time. With that, I make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to approve the items on our Consent Agenda as revised and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Any discussion?
I would like to note my opposition to Agenda Item Number Five.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. Now moving on to our regular agenda. First up, we have the Board of Commissioners tab under the BOC Chair with Item Number 25, to recommend the appointment of the Purchasing Director. Good evening, County Manager.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It is with pleasure to recommend the appointment of Mr. Roger Ball as our new purchasing director. Mr. Ball holds a bachelor's degree in economics from Clark Atlanta University, an MBA from the University of Maryland, and several nationally recognized certifications in procurement. Mr. Ball has over 20 years of progressive experience leading and managing diverse organizations, both nationally and internationally. He has pioneered procurement reform, including the implementation of innovative and leading-edge practices. Mr. Ball possesses years of executive leadership, strategic planning, project management, customer relations, and transformative best-in-class business enterprise experience. Mr. Ball is in the process of relocating here from DC and unfortunately isn't here tonight to be appointed in person by the Board of Commissioners. He will officially start the position, if approved tonight, on the 1st of March. Therefore, it is with pleasure that I make the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to consider the appointment of Mr. Roger Ball as our new purchasing director.
Thank you. With that so moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, my vote will be to oppose this appointment, however, this is not a reflection of the individual.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any additional discussion? With that, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition, thank you.
Just for clarity, could you ask for the vote for all those opposed?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. For Commissioner Gamble, are you in opposition to this motion?
Point of order. She's specifically, this should be a general call, not a specific call to a specific commissioner.
Well, help me clarify, because this is different, because we typically will have our equipment up and this is not how, we've addressed this in the past, but I know that this was a concern of the Commissioner, so if you can just help.
Yes, certainly.
Get verbatim.
You had asked who's in favor of the motion, you had four that raised their hands. If you just ask who's.
Who's in opposition, okay, thank you. So all of those, so do we need to call this motion or this motion is still standing? Thank you, Bill. For all of those in support of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, so we have Commissioner Sheffield, Commissioner Burrow, Commissioner Richardson, and Chairwoman Cupid in support of the motion. All of those opposed to this motion, please raise your hand. Commissioner Gamble is in opposition to this motion.
And you can announce the motion passes.
Okay, the motion passes 4-1. Thank you. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 26. Good evening.
Good evening, how's everybody? My name is Debbie Blair with Cobb County Attorney's Office and I am presenting the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for your consideration. I was going to go through some, some of the top main issues here and then if we have any questions, we'll, we'll address questions. On March, or excuse me, on December 27th, 2020, the US Congress, the COVID Relief Bill was signed into law. It contained 25 billion in emergency rental assistance to the states and local governments with over 200,000 in their population. This is for assistance for rent, rent arrears, utilities and home energy costs, and utilities and home energy arrears. As part of this, the county received 22,888,880.20 towards this effort. As we heard, there was some concern in the past about one program. Going forward, under this particular program, if it's approved tonight, there will be one rental assistance guideline for, for our citizens. Under this program, an eligible household may receive up to 12 months of assistance provided the assistance is not duplicative of other federally funded assistance. An eligible household must meet the following criteria. They must qualify for unemployment or experienced a reduction in household income, incurred significant costs, or experienced a financial hardship directly due to COVID-19. They must also demonstrate a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability and they must have a household income no more than 80% of the median area, the area mean, the area medium income, excuse me. The applicant documentation requirements have been established in the federal law. Those document requirements have been incorporated into the MOU that is under consideration today. And those documents, the requirements must be met or Cobb is subjecting itself to liability if it doesn't, if those, those requirements are not met by the applicants. Additionally, as to the requirements, the documentation requirements, the program requirements, guidance is going to be released, what has been told to us on a rolling basis. So we know right now that there have been two updates for the, the program itself, for the documents. Both of those updates have been incorporated into the current memorandum of understanding. However, as the, the program goes through and, and it's vetted through the US Department of Treasury, there will be additional guidelines, so those guidelines may change throughout the year. This program will be available through December 31st of this year. Let's see here. We are proposing that five service providers be used for this program. We have worked with Star C, Home Free for Family Resources, Musk Ministries, and Sweet Water Mission. And this proposal is that the funds we receive, the 22.8 million, be split equally between the, the five carriers. They will, they will receive the, the money equally and there will be an 8% administration fee that is, that will be paid to them for their, their efforts. As well, allocating the, the money equally, we are asking that the County Manager have the ability to reallocate the funds between those approved service providers as needed. If one entity is getting the money out a little bit faster to ensure that the citizens get the, the money that they, they need, then the County Manager can, can allocate that. As well, if we don't have at least 65% of the total grant obligated or dispersed by September or dispersed by September 30, the US Treasury may claw it back and redistribute it to other states and/or local governments. So we do want to make sure that the money is being distributed timely. The magistrate court will also assist in providing the parties that come through its court information on who has available funding through our five providers. They will coordinate with the service providers, and they will provide space and meeting rooms for the parties so that an agreement can be reached short of eviction. To meet this need, the magistrate court is requesting a temporary full-time judicial program coordinator until December 31 of this year. This will be filled by an existing employee for that time period. As well, Cobb is liable for ensuring that these funds are properly distributed according to the requirements set forth in the federal law. We are asking that WFN help us with grant oversight, and we will be paying them a fee equal to 2% of the total grant amount. As well, the current rental assistance programs under the CARES Act will be eliminated or discontinued if this is approved. And then any necessary budget transfers that are needed to kind of clean up the CARES Act will be done the 1st of February after our mortgage assistance program is finalized. April. Sorry. It is February. At this time, we ask that the board accept the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant in the amount of 22,888,880.20 and approve the items as detailed and recommended in Agenda Item 26. I can answer any questions, and there are also representatives today here from Star C, Home Free, Must Ministries, and the Center for Family Resources. And Judge Murphy with the magistrate court is also here if there are any questions for him.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion and fully follow up by second. Then if there's any discussion, that can follow the motion. So with that so moved? Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
Hi there. Thank you. And I think we're all very excited about being able to accept these funds and get that out to the community. That being said, from a clarification standpoint, just want to make sure that those in the community are aware that this does not prevent... That applying for these funds are wholly separate than their approvals for being given funds previously with the CARES funding. This is a completely separate process, and that they would be able to apply for these funds.
They can apply for these funds. The way the program is set up right now is that any funds that they have received... As I stated, the program allows up to 12 months assistance. Any monies that they have received under the CARES Act will be deducted from that 12-month amount. So if they receive two months of payment under CARES through Home Free or Star C, then they would have 10 months available under this program.
Thank you. And then, secondly, I know there has been some work done to address some of the concerns of the public with regards to streamlining the application process and having a shared sense of data with regards to information coming from one nonprofit to another organization that's administering the funds. So just if you could share that with the community as well.
Yes, we... The nonprofits are working to develop a uniform application. So it will be the same application with the same requirements, you know, requirements from each of the different service providers. So there will no longer be a difference between any of the programs as far as what is available. As well, as I mentioned, if you've received CARES money, you would... That would be deducted. But there is a database that any of the service providers can check. So if an applicant goes to Must Ministries, and they would check the database and know that there was $4,800 from Star C provided. So they could... They would deduct that. Now, the one thing that we do ask or that is going to be required, once you start under this program, if you start with Must Ministries, then you would need to remain with Must Ministries. Just because you've already made the application, otherwise the applicant would be causing double work on the various providers. So once you apply under this program with a provider, then you will remain with that provider through the duration of the assistance period.
And the reason why I wanted to make sure that those hit home is I know that we've had several questions from constituents where they saw the different programs as different programs, not a singular program that was administering out of the same bucket of funds. And so they were thinking, if I apply here, okay, well then I'm... There's another program out there that I can utilize, but that these are all housed under the same program. And so treating it that way, I think, will help allay some of the confusion that does exist.
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully. Thank you. And last point is just to confirm that as we discover some unique use cases, as long as they're... As long as they are matched within the federal guidelines as provided, that this does not prevent the board from potentially seeking further action or creating further opportunities with regards to these funds as well, as long as it remains consistent with federal law.
Right, right. Anything that the federal guidelines require us to provide to them or retain for record-keeping purposes, we have to comply with it. We unfortunately don't have the flexibility, as I stated. I mean, we will be exposing ourselves, the county, to risk. Within that framework, we... I mean, there is some flexibility. But again, it would just be dependent upon what you are requiring or asking us to do.
Of course, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other... Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you, yes. I just want to make sure that the public knows, and the speakers too, tonight, that the 22.8 million is for rental assistance only, and that's all it can be used for. And we do have to comply, like was just discussed, with the federal guidelines that comes with that. So we have to meet... They have to meet certain requirements and guidelines from the money that we receive from the federal government. So I know it's probably burdensome for some to fill out all the paperwork and all, but we have to make sure that everything's in compliance. So thank you. And it's good to see Judge Murphy here and our providers.
Thank you. Yes, in response, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Burrow. Debbie, if you don't mind providing clarification, because I think the comment was made that this is just for rental assistance. However, it's my understanding that utilities can also be covered with these funds?
Yes, it is. It's utilities and home energy costs, as well as the rental, all housing expenses. Actually, all housing expenses with the exception of telecommunications expenses, which would be no phone, cable, or internet.
Thank you. Commissioner... Yes, Commissioner Sheffield.
With respect to the reallocation of funds, if the county manager reallocated the funds to the nonprofit, does that mean there's an additional 8% service fee?
No, it's... You would be... You would get 8% on the money that you are distributing. So if perhaps Must allocated 6 million, they were reallocated 2 million by the county manager, then their fees would increase because it would be based off of the 6 million and wherever those monies were taken from. The... It would just be 8% on what the service provider distributes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, because I wasn't quite sure in the last write-up if it was 8% on the grant or just 8% that they were going to be given. So it is 8% based on the grant that they provide?
What they distribute, yes.
Okay. Another question that I've had since last August/September was how did we arrive at these three nonprofits? The reason why I'm saying this is this is a lot of money. We have a lot of need out here as we continue to hear week after week at our public comment. Usually, when we get federal funds, they go to WFN, who has distributed all our CDBG funds for us, and an application process is made that allows every single nonprofit who administers rental assistance the opportunity to apply for the grant. So once again, I don't know why we are eliminating, I believe it's nine other... Nine, 10 other nonprofits that do rental assistance if the need is so great. Second of all, and Debbie, I apologize, because I know you started this email with me earlier, but I didn't have time today to respond with... Correspond with you on this. Another concern that I have is in the language, and it is in section, I think it was C. And Debbie, this is where we were talking about the service providers shall prioritize considerations for the applications received. So if they have to prioritize applications, that means they can't process these as they come in. Because later on, you say that they have to be prioritized by either their household income is at or below 50%, and then the number of individuals. So if they have to prioritize these applications to determine who gets the money distributed first, unlike the current program that has come on a first-come, first-served basis, meaning you get your funds... Your applications done, it goes. How does that prioritization work when we've got three different service providers collecting applications?
Well, each of the service providers are going to look and review their applications on their own. So basically, even though it's the same program, they're standing alone and they're prioritizing on their own. And to a certain extent, it really is first-come, first-served. As the information is received from the applicant, you know, income information and that kind of thing, if they have two applications that come in and one meets the qualification and is at an 80%, but then an application is reviewed and it's at 40% of the area median, then that application will be looked at first before. But they're going to get an application, and then there is a review process. So the prioritization can't really take place until they've had an opportunity to review the information that's being received from the tenant. So it's rather on an ongoing basis as well. And I know that's not a very clear answer. It's the best I can do. But again, it will be ongoing, again, because information's coming in at different times. But it is not that all applications are received and only those that meet the prioritization are looked at first. They will be reviewed as they come in, and when one meets the prioritization requirements, then it will be prioritized over one that is an eligible household only.
Okay, so I guess, again, I'm a little conflicted because if we've got an application going, I mean, they all need the need, and they need it right now, or they needed it yesterday or three months ago. We're going to be delaying giving out that applicant if somebody else comes in with a different priority. I guess I'm really confused why we're putting a priority issue in here.
We, Cobb County, are not prioritizing those. The federal bill is saying what the priorities are. So the federal government has said that anyone that has been... The two reasons you get prioritized is if your income is 50% or less of the area median, or you have been unemployed for the 90 days prior to your application date. So those are the priorities that we're being told we need to look at and push to the front of the line.
Okay, and then I guess also, I found it very interesting, an email that we all received today from one of the nonprofits that is going to be potentially distributing these funds, essentially saying that the administration of this project becomes more complex, and they're wanting more fees in order to administer this grant funding. Is it still feasible for our nonprofits to do this at the guidelines that the federal government has set, which is capped at 10%? If the federal government continues to put more restrictions on this, and again, we've heard from many of our speakers that we need an easier process, yet this is more complex than the program that we put in place a year ago?
I believe that there are additional requirements in this program than any of the ones that were under our CARES Act money. But again, this is being dictated by what's in the Act. So it's not that... We don't have the ability to say we're not going to prioritize those, or we're not going to require a lease, or we're not going to require the attestation. I mean, we have to do that. As to whether or not the service providers that we've selected can do that, I mean, that would be a question for them. We've had conversations. They've reviewed the MOUs.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Commissioner. I believe we had some additional questions. Did I not see a hand up? Okay, I just want to give time for any other commissioner to ask questions. Okay, thank you. You can go ahead, Commissioner.
So you stated that we're going to be receiving guidelines or updates, potentially periodically?
Right, that's what we did. That's how it was done with CARES, and it probably... About once a month, we would receive updates?
So this is an administrative question, because essentially, if this agenda item is approved, it essentially gives authority to the county manager to reallocate the funds. But if the guidelines change, does the county manager get to update that without bringing it back to the board? Or does it have to come back to the board to have the guidelines updated?
We have written into the MOU that the service providers will become familiar with the changing guidelines and that they will incorporate those changing guidelines upon notification from our... You know, from the county. So that's written into the MOU. We also, as part of this, which, again, we didn't have to do with our CARES money, we have to create policies and procedures. So it would be my intention that the policies and procedures would be updated and then provided to the service providers with the new guidelines in it. And I mean, the federal... I mean, the questions, whenever they come out, the updated guidance, I mean, we regularly send that out to y'all as well.
And so will those policies and procedures be approved by the board prior to going to the service providers?
They're mirroring the MOU.
Even the changes?
No, the change... I mean, it will be changed whenever the guidance change... Changes.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
So if the MOU is amended, that would come back before the board with any changes, correct?
These are changes... These... Anytime, under the CARES money, when we amended an MOU, it was the board that was approving the program. In this particular instance, these are changes that are being required by the federal government. So it's not that the board gets a yes or no. If we have to add a requirement of a six-month verification of income, the board doesn't get to decide that they want that or they don't want to include it in their program. The federal government is saying. Those are the only kinds of things that would be implemented and be required to be implemented. So it's not discretionary on behalf of the board in this particular instance with this program.
But I'm just saying, would it come back to us?
No.
If there are changes? Or they would just be... It would just be amended through the county manager?
It's... The policy and procedure will be amended. And I have that... That's written into...
It is written in... Excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting you, Attorney Blair. It is written specifically on page 124 of our agenda book. And the fourth... It is written specifically on page 124 of our agenda book, in the fourth paragraph, which I'll read because, and I will read it in its entirety just because we're having extensive discussion regarding this point, and I just want to make it very clear on what the guidance. And you can let me know if it's been updated per, the revision. Because, thank you, Pam. I'm here with pink sheet, but I don't see that particular pink sheet. Thank you, appreciate it. So it has, this paragraph has not been modified in your agenda book. It's on page 124. Rental assistance provided to ineligible household should not be duplicative of any other federal-funded rental assistance provided to such household. The documentation requirements have been established in the bill and with the guidance of the U.S. Department of Treasury. The states and local governments have been advised that additional guidance shall be received on a rolling basis. The initial guidelines have been incorporated into the attached master memorandum of understanding. Language is included in the MOU to the effect that the service providers will agree and incorporate any future requirements into the program upon notification from, notification of such from the county. So I perceive that to indicate that any changes would be incorporated into the MOU as it stands, as it's understood, that the requirements can change in the future. Because I believe when we had the CARES Act, we were getting guidance that kept coming down from the federal government that changed. And so recognizing what we experienced in the past, it enabled us to be proactive with this program and include that here. And so I would hate for us to continue to go over that point over and over again when we recognize that this has been an issue and have responded to that.
And if I could further point out, under, in the purpose on the MOU in Section D, it discusses supplemental guidance from the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Are there any additional questions from commissioners?
Just one clarification, if I may. Chair. You said if the funds aren't allocated by, or 60, 60 or 65% by September 30th?
65.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? I believe we had a motion and a second. With that, all of those who are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have Commissioners Sheffield, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Richardson, and Chairwoman Cupid in support of this motion. All of those in opposition, please raise your hand. Commissioner Gambrell is in opposition. The motion passes for one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to transportation. Good to see you, Drew.
Good to see you.
I guess the director had enough of us earlier today, and so she sent you to take her place. It's okay, we're not offended.
No comment.
You're good.
I told her I wouldn't blame her too much tonight.
Okay. All of these, please go ahead.
DOT has five items for board consideration tonight. Item number 27 is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to issue a notice of authorization for the selected contractor to proceed with procurement of required materials prior to award of the construction contract for Kennesaw Mountain pedestrian improvements.
All right, Commissioner Gambrell?
Summon.
Second. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 28, recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the continued utilization of Federal Transit Administration Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act grant funds in an amount not to exceed $1 million for net operating costs associated with the CobbLink Cumberland Circulator bus routes, retroactively to January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Summon.
Second. All of those, any discussion? All of those, do you have a question, Commissioner? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Again, I am going to be opposing this agenda item in our budget. We have only budgeted $800,000 for this, so to be asking for a million, I think, is inappropriate.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. We have Commissioners Sheffield, Burrell, Richardson, and Chairwoman Cupid in support of this motion. All of those in opposition, please raise your hand. Commissioner Gambrell is in opposition. The motion passes for one. Agenda item number 29 has been pulled prior to this meeting, so we will move to agenda item number 30.
Recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an update to the Department of Transportation's pre-qualified list of engineering and associated specialty firms available to be utilized for the procurement of professional services for the 2021, 2021, 2020, 2021 pre-qualification period expiring May 11th, 2022.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 31 had some additional clarification in the background to reflect the dates at which the budgets were updated. The SPOS-TIP budget, the 2016 SPOS-TIP budget in November 2018. For additional clarification, the recommendation has, has remained the same with the revised agenda item. And that recommendation is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, a no-cost time extension through June 30th, 2021, for intersection improvements on Hicks Road at Concord Road.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Summled.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Drew. Drew, we have one more. We have agenda item number 32, not so quick.
Yes, ma'am. Recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing prior to expending more than $100,000 for Department of Transportation Program Management Services to include the 2022 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program, limited to general engineering services, individual major infrastructure projects, transit programs, and airport programs, and further authorize issuance of a request for proposals to secure these services utilizing selection process number one, competitive negotiations.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. We are now moving to our next tab, which is for appointments. Our first appointment is to, I will read this one here. Our first appointment is to approve the appointment of Craig Owens to the Board of Trustees for the Cobb County Employees Pension. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there a motion? I just read it, I didn't read it as a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? Commissioner Gambrell?
Yes, my opposition to this appointment is not based on the individual. While there has been extensive email exchange between this board pertaining this agenda item and how appointments are being made, my opposition is based on the chair stating to me she would oppose and encourage other commissioners to oppose as well an individual I have submitted for consideration to a future board appointment. This flies in the face of equitable treatment implied to each commissioner to bring forth individuals to serve in various capacities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from commissioners? I'm in, okay, yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Now, I, I was just going to say that I, I'm looking at this as an appointment to the pension board, and the sheriff has the most, well, public safety has the most with police and sheriff, employees that are impacted by the pension. And our sheriff is a retired Cobb PD and is on the pension himself. So, and that brings a seat to the table on the pension board for public safety as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
But it is a board appointment, and any nominations should be considered, but I, I see the, the reasoning behind Sheriff Owens.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, yes.
So I'm not so much aware of, of being told to oppose a particular appointment, but when I see the position for the pension board, I see that as a constitutional officer appointment. And just as a general point or general comment, I think when it comes to our, our boards, we're, as a Board of Commissioners, we do appoint to, I would like to see general consensus on how we do those appointments. But with regard to the pension board, I see this as a constitutional officer appointment. There are other Board of Commissioner appointments to the pension board that I think need to comply with whatever we decide as a board on how we want to proceed with appointments. I need that clarification for myself.
Thank you, Commissioner, and understood. Is there any further discussion, Commissioner? I'm in support of Sheriff Owens in moving into this position, and I do understand that there's always opportunity to clarify our processes for all of our commissioners. This particular appointment is for a constitutional officer, which has been weighed by all of our commissioners. And I believe that every commissioner's had the opportunity to weigh in. If there are concerns about any other appointment that we have on our board, as Commissioner Richardson has stated, we have opportunity to address that. I do not think that we should hold up Commissioner, excuse me, Sheriff Owens' appointment because there may be concerns about other boards. However, I do respect the concern that Commissioner Gambrell has, and just ask that that be weighed when that particular position, when that particular board is up for consideration before this board. With that, there was a motion, there was a second. All of those who are in favor of this appointment, I ask that you raise your hand. This motion passes for one. Oh, excuse me, three.
Those are, those are in favor, now we ask for those who are opposed.
I'm getting ahead of myself, thank you. Oh, don't, Commissioner Burrell. Those who are in support of this motion to appoint Sheriff Owens to the Board of Trustees for the Cobb County's Employees Pension, please raise your hand. All right. The motion is supported by Commissioner Sheffield, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Richardson, and Chairwoman Cupid. Those who are in opposition to this motion, please raise your hand. The motion is opposed by Commissioner Gambrell. The motion carries for one. Okay, it's my understanding that the next few appointments do not need to be voted on and are simply announcements by commissioners. With that, we have agenda item number 34, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I would like to announce the appointment of Brian O'Malley to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you.
And he replaces Judy Williams.
Thank you. Agenda item number 35, Commissioner Richardson?
Like to announce the appointment of Milton Dorch to the Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number 36, Commissioner Richardson?
Announcing the appointment of Angela Presley to keep Cobb beautiful.
Thank you. Agenda item number 37, Commissioner Richardson?
Announcing the appointment of Walter Colas to the Transit System Advisory Board.
Thank you. Agenda item number 38, Commissioner Richardson?
Announcement of the reappointment of Patty Zachary to the Animal Services Board.
Thank you. Agenda item 38, am I, did I, am I getting my number? Yes, I'm sorry. Let's go back to...
I didn't do Ed.
Ed. So that was 30, 38 is Ed, that's what I have here, 37 Walter Colas, right? Okay, if you can just help me with the clerk to just be on track for numbers, which number are we on? Are we on 38?
Yes, she's...
I skipped 38.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go back to 38. Agenda item number 38, go ahead, Commissioner.
Announcing the appointment of Ed Finnegan to the Transit System Advisory Board.
Thank you. Agenda item number 39, Commissioner Richardson?
Now announcing the reappointment of Patty Zachary to the Animal Services...
There's got to be an easier way. I could have probably said agenda item number 34 through 39 next time. All right, and then agenda item number 40, Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Rachel Gray to the Public Library Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Agenda item number 41, Commissioner Sheffield?
I announce the appointment of Tanya Robinson to the 1% Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee.
Thank you. And then item number 42?
I announce the appointment of Opayemi Adeyemi to the Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, with that, we are on to our second public comment.
The first speaker is Ron Syffen.
Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to, first of all, I'm Ron Syffen, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not anybody else. I've, over the last couple of years, I've spoken before about the proposed bus rapid transit route that's proposed to run in the future express lanes along I-285. And I would like to address that issue again. First of all, we have two new commissioners who haven't heard me address this before. But also, as you know, I attended the transportation portion of the retreat, and I had some concerns about the way this particular item was discussed at the retreat. So I wanted to bring this back to your attention. What was presented at the retreat was based on a study that was done, study results were announced a couple of years ago, recommending bus rapid transit to run in the future express lanes on I-285 between Smyrna and Northlake Mall in DeKalb County. And the reason that that's the route that was recommended is that the study was authorized and paid for by all of the cities and CIDs between Smyrna and Northlake Mall. So that's what the consultants were asked to study. That's what they studied, that's what they recommended. So as soon as that, as I saw the study, I brought to the attention of Cobb County that it doesn't make any sense, if we're going to build the express lanes all the way from I-20 to I-20, doesn't make any sense for the, for this transit route to stop at Smyrna and stop at, at Northlake Mall. It needs to go on the east side, needs to go all the way down to I-20 and connect to the Indian Creek MARTA station. And on the west side, it needs to go all the way down to I-20 and connect at a minimum to the Holmes MARTA station. Now, I personally would like to see it also run from there out to the Six Flags area and connect to South Cobb. That could be a long-term extension, it doesn't have to be immediate, but it would be a, an incredible mistake for the, for the, for that transit line to stop at Smyrna. At an absolute minimum, it needs to go all the way down and connect to the Holmes MARTA station. The study that was done a couple of years ago, the cities and CIDs were interested in economic development along that... And by the way, the DeKalb DOT, Cobb DOT agreed with me also, but the, the DeKalb DOT saw it the same way, and as soon as they saw the study, they went to the Board of Commissioners and said, "Look, we need you to authorize for this study to extend all the way down to I-20 and connect to the Indian Creek MARTA station for the exact same reasons that I'm saying." And if we're going to look at this just based on economic development for the people who paid the, for the study, that doesn't, that doesn't help Cobb County or the region. We need to look at this from a standpoint of a regional mobility solution, in which case, it's got to go all the way down to I-20 and connect to both MARTA stations. Furthermore, if we're going to look at, at this from an economic development standpoint, as well as an, as well as an access to jobs standpoint, it would be a tragic mistake for Cobb County to let that transit line stop at Smyrna and not provide direct connectivity to South Cobb. Even if it only goes to the Holmes MARTA station, at least we have the Routes 25 and the Routes, and Routes 30, which serve South Cobb and connect to the Holmes MARTA station. So we at least get that direct connection as long as it goes all the way to the Holmes MARTA station. But to chop off South Cobb and not give them access to all of the benefits of this transit route, which I personally think is going to be the most important new transit route
Mr. Sython, I'm sorry.
that will be provided in the entire region.
Mr. Sython.
Thank you, you're timed, you're timed, sure, I'm sorry.
And just to conclude, I'd urge all to let the consultants know to extend.
Please, your time is running, yes, sorry. We, we gave you additional time above your time, but thank you, we appreciate your time.
Audrey Reese Stewart, Audrey Reese.
My name is Audrey Reese, I'm the Executive Director of Star C, and I'm very glad to be here with you this evening. I want to begin by thanking the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, this present board, and those in the past for making the awards that you have to rental assistance, utility assistance, food assistance, and other things of that nature for the residents and constituents of Cobb County. As we all know, this has been such a challenging time, and we appreciate you doing your absolute best to be responsible and to be good steward of the money that have come through your hands. I would like to thank Chief Magistrate Court Judge Brendan Murphy for partnering with Star C and allowing us to come into the court system to offer our programs as resources for people who are facing eviction and give us the opportunity to serve residents even at that point. I would like to thank Cobb County Schools for partnering with us. Our main goal, particularly with Star C, is to reduce trans scarcity in local schools by partnering with landlords. We'd like to stabilize families in their apartment homes and keep their children in their school, and that way, they can all do better. And finally, I would like to thank the landlords for partnering with us. Our program has required landlords to waive 10% of outstanding rent as well as late fees, and we know that that, they're having a challenging time as well. So that is a challenge on top of it. But with the partnership of landlords, this board, the court system, and others in Cobb County, Star C has been able to pay out over $3 million in assistance for the residents of Cobb, and we feel very fortunate that we could be part of the solution for the challenges of COVID at this time. And I'd like to just speak now on behalf of myself and the other agencies who have been awarded funding under this new emergency rental agreement assistance program, I should say. Yes, it is a bit different than the programs that have come before us with additional requirements, more complex, it would require more reporting, more case management on our part. We are now working diligently to create a single application that is the same across programs, to have the same guidelines across all agencies, so that everyone will go through the same process when they come to us. And in this way, we want to try to, to reduce the barriers. I would like to echo Attorney Blair and say, though, that the guidelines that we are striving to follow, we understand that they were set forth by the federal government, so there's not a lot of leeway for what we can do or, or a lot of leeway for what even you can do. But we will certainly work within those guidelines to do the most that we can for the residents of Cobb and to try to expedite this much-needed assistance as fast as we can. It will be a challenge. As you know, many of us in the nonprofit agency world push for more than that, that 8%, but we understand that WFN got their 2%, so there goes the whole 10%. We will be trying our very best to be as efficient as possible to execute this program according to, according to the requirements and do everything that we can to help the residents. And for the residents of Cobb, we understand how very frustrating it has been for you all as you've gone through this process. It's been frustrating for us when we've wanted to help but could not. It's been frustrating for us to have to tell people they didn't qualify, to tell people no. Our eviction relief program was actually started before COVID, and we used to have money that we could help people who were having non-COVID hardships. But, but now that that funding has dried up, all we can do is help people who are having COVID hardship. As Mr. Lancy said, many people are having COVID, are, were having hardships before now, many people have ongoing hardships that don't have anything to do with COVID, and right now, we can't help them. We've cried with people on the phone, we've cried on each other's shoulders. But I would just like to say on behalf of myself and the other nonprofits that our heart is with all the residents of Cobb County, our heart is with you, and we will continue to do the absolute most that we can to help, to help this government stand in the gap at this unprecedented time. Just give us grace as we try to do so, continue to give your feedback, continue to help us, and we'll continue to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judge Murphy.
Thank you. As Judge Murphy comes up, we are certainly honored to have him here as an elected official and did not, and I remiss that I did not recognize that we had our sheriff here tonight, who I believe is still here. And also, we had Representative Thomas, who was here this evening from the state legislature. I want to thank both of you for coming tonight.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioners. My name is Brendan Murphy, I serve as the Chief Magistrate Judge, and I bring you greetings on behalf of the 18 judges of the People's Court and the staff we're proud to work with each day. I know you all have had a long day of meetings. I was on the bench for nine and a half hours today considering domestic violence cases, so I'm going to be as brief as a lawyer knows how to be. Two, 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 that's right, two main points. Number one, thank you. And I can't comment on any specific case, especially while it's open, but one thing you heard tonight illustrates the important, importance of partnering with the courts. Sometimes folks are, very oftentimes proactive, seeking help, and, and just not being able to find it. So at that last moment, the most vulnerable folks in our community, who we're trying to catch before that moment of eviction, there is going to be a staff member from one of the five groups you have approved, and there's going to be our new temporary staff member, trying to catch those folks and help the tenant remain in his or her home and help make the landlord whole at the same time. And that is what you have done, and that's the importance of the court process. I shared with the chairwoman and this board that what this board has done has become a statewide model. When people in our circle, in the magistrate court circle, talk about rental assistance, they not, they talk about Cobb County because of the success of this program. And so my last point is, the details are important, and the county attorney, you know, they do a wonderful job with the details, finance. This board asks pertinent questions to get those details right. But I really want to pause today and recognize this historic moment. Your leadership, this chairwoman and this Board of Commissioners, has allocated $22 million to keep people in their homes and to help landlords stay afloat during one of the toughest times any of us have lived through. So thank you. I promise you, the People's Court is going to work hard every day to make sure we do right by our folks. So thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you.
She had signed up earlier, but she said she might have to leave, so.
Okay.
That will conclude the public comment this evening. Ms. Chair.
Thank you. All right, we are now at our Commissioners' Public Address. Commissioner Gamble.
Our first slide is to announce the Cobb County 4-H plant sale. They are still taking pre-orders at the UGA Cobb Extension Office. There are limited quantities of all varieties of plants, and they are sold on a first-come, first-served basis. Pre-orders will be taken now until March 5th. Plant sales brochures are available online at www.ugeaextension.org, or you can call 770-528-4070 to order. And spring is coming. If you need any tips, tricks, or advice on tree selection, planting, or maintenance, be sure to watch Prep Your Garden for Spring Tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., hosted by the Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent Haley. You can join live on Facebook or via Zoom Wednesday, February 24th, again at 11:00 a.m. Also, upcoming classes for Cobb Senior Services will be CS on March 2nd, Family and Consumer Science on March 10th, Tree Identification on March 17th, and you can receive more information Our Cobb Extension celebrated Black History Month with a traditional feast. The ladies of the Extension decided to prepare a meal to share their history of food. Each of the ladies, including the youngest one at only 19 years old, prepared family favorite dishes and shared stories on how their family traditions have been passed down through the years. Some of the older ladies told stories passed down by their elders. These stories and the food to go along with them are what make our Southern history so special. Some of the stories they shared go back to the early 1900s and have been passed down by memory, and continuing to tell the stories and share the recipes, it keeps history alive for the next generation. The luncheon was a big success, and the ladies would like to make it a new tradition. And support keeping Cobb beautiful. So we're going to start helping keep your district clean. I know Commissioner Sheffield has had pictures out there cleaning up. We are going to be working with our DOT crew to schedule a day to come out and educate folks on how you can keep our area beautiful, and we'll actually go to different areas within the district and show different things that you can do to help keep our community beautiful with cleanup and maintenance. So pay attention to the newsletter for upcoming dates. And that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Yep. All right, so congratulations to the new appointees. You can see their pictures there, they're nice and smiling, and just happy to have them be a part of our future service. Next, so just want to reiterate, we still have our Priorities Tour going on. All this means is, if you want input into what I'm carrying or setting forth as priorities for District 2, please send an email or use your phone to capture this QR code right now as I'm talking and delaying my conversation, so that you have a little bit of time to take your phone out. And really, just, just book some time with me. I will go over all 14 priorities with you, and it's your opportunity to make suggestions, edits, take things out. It's open. I ask to at least have five people in the room, though, and, and it's, it's virtual. All right, next up. So from the office, yes, we are going into our second set of community huddles. So I've mentioned about the community cabinet, the liaisons that I have that are there to make sure that you're always, you have someone to talk to, that's easy to access our, our office and can work with you to come up with ideas. These are the four that represent the different geographical areas of District 2. So we, they will all be introducing themselves in this weekend's huddle, so if you're interested in hopping in on that Zoom conversation, just, there's your QR code again, and I'm taking a little bit of sweet time to, to say the rest of my sentence. And then lastly, there's Georgia Tech Black Leadership Conference this weekend, invited to share some words at, so just wanted to say, go Jackets. Yes, that is that. Community updates. Go next. Transportation, so Cobb Link, there are some new requirements with regards to face masks, just making sure that everyone's aware of that, required at transfer stations and on buses, so it's more of a PSA. Congratulations to the new court appoint, the magistrate court appointees, some more smiling faces. Just wanted to welcome them as well and, and make sure the community had a chance to do so. Next, Black History Month, so our libraries did put together a reading list, if you are so curious. This does not have the QR code, but there is a link if you want to see it, or you can just go to cobbcounty.org library, and I'm sure you'll be able to find it there. Senior Services, so if you go to their YouTube page, they're doing a series where they're covering different local members of our, of our community with regards to Black History. You get to hear some of the stories from members of our community. Please partake. Not too much more to go, this is my second to last, so Parks, they've been super innovative with regards to COVID and coming up with new programming for, for you all, and so this is another example of that. They've got something called Escape Art Heist, it's 60 minutes to solve some interesting puzzles. So if you're interested, just email Marie and, or call that number that's listed, and you'll be able to participate. And lastly, there's a video from Keep Cobb Beautiful for a program that I am super excited about, and we'll be doing some more coverage on some of the other programs taking place as well, but Hefty Energy is something that we can all, you know, be proud of, that we are participating in it, because it is a very esteemed program that allows us to create energy out of using some recycled plastics. So there's a video, I don't know if the video will work, but we'll give it a whirl.
Uh-oh.
My name is Kimberly White, I'm the Executive Director for Keep Cobb Beautiful, and we've been participating in the Hefty Energy Bag Program for about three years now. Come with me so I can show you a little bit more about how it works. We are on our way to go see Mrs. Tackett. She is a community member here in Cobb County, and she's an avid recycler, and so Ms. Tackett participates in the Hefty Energy Bag Program curbside at her residential home. We typically do not bag our recyclables when we place them at the curb, but the Hefty Energy Bag Program that we have here in Cobb County allows us to capture plastics that traditionally would be considered contamination, such as straws, plastic bags, shopping bags, lids, things that are considered hard-to-recycle plastics, in this bright-colored orange bag in your normal curbside collection process. It is then taken to the recycling facility located here in the county, and then we pull this bag material out, and we're able to send it to end-user markets to turn it into items such as diesel fuel, oil and wax, and even aggregate for cinder blocks. Well, our residents are able to participate in a program that helps us keep contamination out of our regular recycling, and it also keeps this material from going to the landfills. Ultimately, these hard-to-recycle plastics are actually a very valuable resource. So it's a really great opportunity for Cobb County, Georgia, to be able to collect and recover as much of it as possible.
That concludes my announcements, thank you.
Very nice, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell.
Right on there.
Yes, she does.
Okay, well, we've got a new adoption, a veteran adoption, Superior Pets for Patriotic Pets. Mr. Easton served in the U.S. Marine Corps for seven years. We thank him and his family for adopting this beautiful Siberian Husky. We're grateful for your sacrifices to secure our nation's freedom, and it touches our hearts that we can be part of you meeting your forever friend. hearts that we can be part of you meeting your forever friend. To date, there has been 184 adoptions since the start of this program, and none of this would be possible without the generosity and compassion of Superior Plumbing and Cobb County Animal Services. So go to Facebook, Superior Pets for Patriotic Pets, and like us, and you can see all the pictures of the veterans, 184, that have adopted their forever best friend. Cobb Senior Services, Community Food Drive, Drive-Up Services for Cobb Residents ages 60 and older to get shelf-stable food this Friday, February 26th, from 11:00 to noon, or while supplies last. You do need an ID showing your date of birth and that you're a Cobb resident for each senior. No appointment is needed, and Cobb Senior Services is located at 1150 Powder Springs Street. They're also accepting food donations, and you can call Marlene to schedule a drop-off, and you can visit CobbSeniors.org for a complete list of needed items. Atherton Place Senior Living Community is also having a drive-through event for local seniors, and that is on Wednesday, tomorrow, February 24th, with pickup from 12:00 to 2:30 p.m. If you or a loved one would benefit from a free meal, RSVP to 770-421-7300. Sorry, that's already passed. I'm sorry. But if they do another one, we'll put that in there, too. And then I think Lisa Crossman with Public Health spoke about this, the food boxes that can be picked up between 10:00 and 2:00, while supplies last until March 20th. Sponsored by Ipsen Diagnostics. There are four pickup locations on Thursdays at the Woody-Fight Senior Center in Douglasville, Fridays at Kingdom Builders in Douglasville, Fridays at Legion Park in Austell, and Saturdays at Eastwood Baptist Church in Marietta. And I think Commissioner Gamble already announced the plant sale for 4H, so be sure and get your plants. And the next slide is just, oh, the Arts Center, no, the Library, sorry. Mountain View Library is hosting Small Wonder STEM, and for preschoolers ages 3 to 5, and their caregivers can explore everyday science topics through books, experiments, and art. The next event is 10:30 Thursday, April 15th, and you can register at CobbCounty.org, and you'll get a kit with the required materials to complete the challenges when you register. And with Planning Commission coming up on Tuesday, there's some, the cases that are in District 3 will be in my newsletter, so please stay updated on District 3 events from DOT to zoning to everything we do, and subscribe to my newsletter, CobbCounty.org/Burrow. And I don't have a, but when we get back to presentations, we will be recognizing the Cobb County Fire Department for celebrating 50 years of service to our citizens. And this Friday will be a graduation ceremony for fire recruit classes 55 and 56. So we congratulate our Cobb County Fire Department on 50 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Sheffield?
All right. Let's share a few golden nuggets in District 4. Next slide. So as we bring Black History Month to a close, with this being the final week of celebration, I invite you all out to the South Cobb Art Alliance, and they have an annual exhibit celebrating Black History Month, and it will run from now, actually, through August 5th on Marietta Street and Powder Springs, so I encourage you all to make it down there between now and then. Next slide. Congratulations. We have a very remarkable and outstanding man in our district, young man, rather, Mr. Taylor Dex. He is a Campbell High School senior in the ID program, and he just earned his Eagle Scout rank through the BSA Troop 61, which is located on Hurt Road and Hicks Road in Mabelton. And just a little bit more about Taylor. He earned the rank of Eagle Scout on December 16, 2020, and he served his troop as a senior patrol leader on two occasions, and his Eagle Project benefited the Mabelton Historic Community District. So we're hoping, once we get COVID behind us, we can have an acknowledgement for Mr. Taylor Dex. Next slide. Scholarships. Cobb EMC is proud to offer the EMC Community Foundation Scholarship, which will award 14 scholarships in the amount of $5,000 each to eligible students with a primary residence served by Cobb EMC. So there are two types of scholarships available. One, there's a Community University Scholarship, and there's also a Vocational Technical College Scholarship. The annual scholarships are funded and administered by Cobb EMC Community Foundation Board. For more information, you can contact Mark Justice at the information on the screen. That number is 678-355-3124. The application deadline is February 26th. Next slide. Neighborhood Notes. So this is a little tidbit from our Neighborhood Safety Commission, and the message for this week is prepare for disasters and emergencies. Do you have a plan in place when emergency or disaster happens? Cobb County Neighborhood Safety Commission has created safety preparedness materials to assist you, and you can order preparedness materials at, and there's the link there, but I'll read it, is orders.gpo.gov/ICPD/ICPD.ASPX. Please allow two to three weeks for delivery due to safety precautions in place. To protect employees from COVID-19, you may experience delays. Next slide. Also, congratulations to our parents and students at Pebblebrook High School. On February 6th, Dr. Dana Giles, excuse me, organized an honor parade to salute and recognize 917 students whose scholastic achievement earned them a place on the honor roll. Isn't that fantastic? What a great accomplishment to see fully 37% of the 2,465 student body excelling academically. Way to go, students. You are amazing. That is incredible. Congratulations. Next slide. That may be a, but what's missing on the slide is I encourage you all, tomorrow, myself along with Gault Porter, we'll have our In-the-Zone Monthly Zoning Meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m., and you can contact Deedra at deedra, D-E-E-R-A dot Watts at CobbCounty.org, and she will happily send you the link. You do not need to register in advance. You can register a few minutes before the meeting. Again, that will be at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And being a parent of two school-aged children, for students to be performing well academically, especially during a pandemic, is not a small feat. So I appreciate you taking time to recognize that. And preparing for these meetings, it's also not a small feat, and, you know, I'm so busy trying to make sure things are in place, that sitting here and listening to everyone tonight, and particularly the announcements, made me feel heartfelt. So before I go into my presentations, I want to say thank you to each Commissioner, because I know it takes a lot to prepare for our meetings. And on top of that, you take time to prepare information for our citizens to be aware of things going on in the county. And even when there's overlap, it's still a sense of pride, because I know that you are trying to do the best that you can to get information out there so that we're reaching each of our citizens. And so personally, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And as I sat here today, I also want to, again, say thank you to our elected officials who are here tonight. We know you have other positions that you attend to around the clock, but yet you took time to be here tonight, and that means a lot, because it stresses the value of our partnership. So again, Representative Thomas, I know I gave you a shout-out earlier today. I think you were outside talking to some of your constituents, but thank you for being here tonight. I noticed you brought your family members, and these children being out here tonight shows the level of sacrifice it takes to participate in public meetings. Again, Commissioner, excuse me, I don't know why I want to put you on our board tonight, Sheriff, but Sheriff Owens, I see you here tonight with Gaynor. I don't know, I'm sorry. I'm calling you Steve Gaynor, but I don't know your official position, but thank both of you for being out here tonight, even seeing our officers who have been in the back of our room, keeping order within the room tonight. I want to say thank you. I've recognized you being up here tonight. Every meeting, none of this couldn't take place without our communication staff. Thank you for being here and helping us with our presentations and with airing our meetings every night and making sure things go smoothly. Want to thank our Clerk's Office for making us look better than at least I should when I come here, because of all the preparation you do to make sure we go smoothly through our agenda. Thank you to staff for all you do to prepare and keep your departments running and to keep business items on our agenda so that we can keep the county running. And thank you to all of our citizens. You've been out there working and, you know, as was shared tonight, dealing with very sensitive and frustrating challenges, but yet you've take time to make your voice be heard. Know that that matters. Even though you're here as one person, you're speaking on behalf of so many out in our community, dealing with the challenges, that for one reason or another, they're not here to speak on. So I want to thank you for being here tonight. Pardon me? Yeah, oh, I was told to thank the press. You hope to get our word out. Yes, certainly, we cannot forget you. You've been hanging us, hanging out with us all day today. So thank you for helping to also get the word out throughout the county. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, because it truly is a matter of teamwork to make sure that we are including everyone and recognizing everyone, and everybody here has a role to play. And with that, I'd like, and Commissioner Assistance, you also make us look so good. Cannot forget you. Clap, 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 clap. Yes. So with that, I'm going to go to the few slides that I have prepared here tonight. Again, recognizing Black History Month, I appreciate my assistant in putting this slide together for me, because as much as we talk about Black History Month and we refer to race, you know, one thing that is a sign of growth or that allows you to measure your progress is looking at our children. You know, when you haven't seen children over time, you see how much they grow, and you realize how much time is passing. A lot of time is passing for each and every one of us, but it's certainly impactful for our youth when we think about all that they experience in their lifetime. I was on a call today with Leadership Cobb, and we were talking about experiences of African-Americans who've participated in that program from its inception, and we've talked about the highlights, but also some of the challenges. And I couldn't believe, as one person was speaking from 20 years ago, that some of the African-Americans in my class dealt with those same challenges. The goal for all of this, I think, is for us to want to create a better future for those that are coming behind us. So as we think about Black History Month, it's not just the African-Americans that you see in front of you that you deal with as peers, but it's also thinking about those children and wanting to create a better place and space for them so that they have the ability to contribute to society as much as anyone else and to live a fulfilled life. So I appreciate this slide and giving me some perspective that the things that we're doing today hopefully are creating a better pathway for our children. Next slide. Well, I know we've had a lot of discussion about vaccinations going on in Cobb County. I'm pleased that we are still offering COVID testing, and COVID testing is now being housed back at Jim Miller Park, so you can go to that site both for vaccinations, if you successfully sign up online, but you can also go there for COVID testing. And we are providing that testing in partnership with Mako Medical, and appreciate them helping us to make sure we can continue to provide that service. And their drive-through service for testing resumed this Monday. So please, if you'd like to learn more, you can register by going online at the website that's listed. You could always go to Cobb Douglas Public Health's website and get additional information on testing as well. As was shared in the presentation by Cobb Douglas Public Health, there are now four mega sites which are opening across the state where they will also be providing vaccinations. The locations are listed to be in Clayton County at the Delta Air Museum, which is the most proximate location for a lot of us, next in Macon, Haversham County, and also in Albany. You can visit MyVaccineGeorgia.com to sign up for that site. And I heard that some of the sites have been readily getting people in and vaccinated. So if you know anyone who's in that class or Phase 1A for vaccinations, who still need assistance, please, them in registering by going to the site, or you can direct them to the site. Next slide. I will provide, they'll be, tongue-tied. I will be providing our State of the County address on Monday, March 8th, at 11:45 a.m. with the Cobb Chamber. I used to provide a State of the District address as a Commissioner, and I used to provide two of them, one for the business community and one also for the general public, and I thought it'd be fitting to do the same as well, since sometimes members of the public can't make it to the day presentations. And so we will have an evening presentation at 7:00 p.m. at Sewell Mill Library. Due to this being a smaller site, we've asked people to please sign up online, and we will pick people at random to attend, and also make this available virtually for anyone who wants to observe the State of the County address. With that, I just want to, again, give us a reminder that we're still in a pandemic. Our rates are going down, but as you saw by the chart earlier this evening, our death rate is going up. And nationally, we recently reached 500 deaths, 500,000 deaths across our county, which is far beyond what we could have ever perceived when the pandemic hit us about a year ago. So please, let's be mindful of keeping everyone safe to our best extent possible so that we can do our best to get through this. We're doing well, we're amongst each other, but there are a lot of people who may not be doing well. And even, there's an assumption that those around you who are smiling and operating are doing well. We all have an additional burden that we bear by the time that we are in, and I can't tell you enough just how important it is just to be mindful of personhood at the time, or as Lisa Crossman said, just to be kind, because you don't know what people are going through. With that, again, thank you for joining us this evening, and hope you will join us in March for our next Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Thank you. Thank you.